All right, we're ready when you are.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, February 25th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to Order. And I'll start with our land acknowledgement. And just want to read that Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as the first step in our honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial, and to whom we give thanks for allowing this passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships to honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. Will the General Counsel please call the role? And Ms. Trubut, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Do we have any one from?
Malik, Malik, could you step in for a second? Are you available?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. President Cobb?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Bob Bright?
Here.
And can somebody assist me? Oh, Director Stroger?
Here.
Can somebody assist me with the names of our student representatives?
I can do that for you, Assistant General Counsel Ben Row. Thank you for jumping in for me. Indigo Hill?
Here.
Hi, Indigo. Nathan Estman?
Here.
Hi, Nathan. Kaitlyn Yi?
Here.
Hi, Kaitlyn, and Jasmine Pearson?
Here.
Hi, Jasmine. Welcome to all of our student representatives, and we have a board quorum.
Thank you. And I didn't say this before, but I want to welcome all members of the community who might be watching via the livestream or the Facebook, or the Facebook livestream or via YouTube. So thank you all for joining us tonight as well. Item number three, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so move that we adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Then blue can second it. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Moving on to item number four, Members of the Public Wishing to Address the School Board. Since we've been meeting virtually in response to COVID, we've tried to create options for the community to give public comment. So you can see detailed descriptions of how to submit public comment via two options. One includes participating live and delivering public comment, and in that case, you have up to three minutes to deliver your comments. The other option is to submit comments in writing. In each of these formats, you need to submit your comment or submit your request to speak 24 hours in advance of the public board meeting. We all invite individual members to participate and to give comments one at a time, but just to note, you'll have three minutes to deliver your comments, and you can see a clock counting down that should be visible to you. It'll flash when you have one minute left to speak, and we'll ask that you wrap up your comments when the time has expired. We're going to try to be really good about sticking to the three-minute time period tonight because we want to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity to give their feedback. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Santoro to call her first speaker.
First speaker is Kelly Monahan Bergson. She is speaking regarding concerns about physical health regarding in-person learning. Kelsey?
Hello, just let me know and I'll be ready to start. Oh, I'm going now, sorry. Hello, my name is Kelsey Monaghan Bergson, and I'm a senior at Wilson High School. As an active member of the community, I'm eager to shift into the hybrid environment, but not at the expense of the health of staff and students and their families. Taking the other negative consequences discussed into account, we must recognize the greatest danger: physical health. The CDC has declared that it is safe to return to in-person learning, but only if certain guidelines are followed. Unfortunately, TPS is not enacting proper safety precautions. This raises serious concerns about the current hybrid model. Access to COVID-19 vaccines is universally crucial, even more so among teachers. According to the CDC, recent studies show that educators were at the center of recent COVID-19 clusters. To mitigate the possibility of illness or death, we need to vaccinate teachers and promote COVID-19 precautions outside of schools. This includes minimizing in-person adult interactions at school, ensuring universal and correct mask use, and physical distancing among educators and students when in-person interaction is unavoidable. TPS must mandate correct, effective mask usage to safely enter the hybrid phase. This is the simplest to enforce and the most effective way to mitigate transmission rates, yet this integral aspect is most commonly abused. Many students who play school sports don't follow mask mandates, so why would the general student body? TPS must enforce strict mask requirements and consequences to ensure the safety of its students and staff. If a school can send home a student for violating the dress code, they can certainly do the same for a student who refuses to wear a mask properly. As of now, the district has not communicated a plan to return to online instruction if there is a COVID outbreak at the school. TPS must monitor local COVID-19 data to keep track of community transmission levels, modify mitigation strategies, and determine whether school closures are necessary. This routine should include a daily analysis of public health data for the Tacoma area. Tacoma Public Schools must ensure that they take the necessary precautions and follow guidelines to mitigate the risk of COVID. And no matter the mitigation factors put into place, we must recognize that there will never be a 100% safe scenario. It is inequitable to students, especially IB ones, not to have an alternative remote option aside from Tacoma Online. In conjunction with proper protocols, TPS must provide opportunities to students currently enrolled in the hybrid model to remain remote. TPS's motto is "Every Student, Every Day." But with the current guidelines set in place, this invalidates students' health and academics by simply listening to administrative wishes. The board has done little to consider and address students' and teachers' opinions and concerns. Any COVID-19 cases that occur due to reopening of schools will create trauma within families and the community, and will be entirely the fault of TPS. I implore you to seriously consider a remote alternative to save lives. Keep students and staff safe.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Our next speaker is Kai Trong, regarding concerns returning to the hybrid model, specifically student bodies' concerns. Kai?
Oh, hi, it's Key. Good evening.
Excuse me, Kay.
Good evening. My name is Key Trong, and I am the Executive ASB President at Foss High School. Voices of the Future, hashtag Tacoma, is an unaffiliated with TPS, created a survey on students' opinions about returning to in-person learning shared on Monday. In just three days, there were 196 student responses across all Tacoma High Schools and Middle Schools. The survey is still open, however, I would like to share the preliminary results. One of the questions asked, "Do you have any concerns about going back to school?" 78.1% of students say they are concerned about going back to school. I would like to highlight some personal student responses. One student says, quote, "I live with a disabled sister, and with that said, all of my family contributes to take safe actions in protecting her. My sister cannot speak or signal, therefore she feels ill. We can only try and guess why she is crying. One of my distant disabled relatives died of COVID, and their direct family did not know that they had COVID, due to the disabled person not being able to communicate. And although I didn't know them, it's scary to know that it could also happen to my sister. I quarantined and rarely go out of the house, and all my quarantine will go to waste if we return to school," end of quote. Another student said, quote, "I am currently homeless and am living with my grandparents who are both highly at risk of getting COVID. I also have an at-risk sister who is only three years old, along with my father, who especially cannot get sick because he is the only person working with other than my grandpa. Going back to in-person learning is going to put all nine people living in my household in danger, starting with the weakest of us," end of quote. Furthermore, students provided questions they have for the school board. Why is the fact that there are many students who live in highly at-risk homes, many of which are in low-income areas, not being considered when you guys have been made the choice to go back to in-person learning? What mental health resources are you going to provide? If you claim going back to in-person will benefit the students' mental health and academics, then why are you putting us in a position where it is clearly damaging our health and success? The school board needs to find ways to improve mental health via online learning, provide necessary academic and mental health resources for students and staff, and most importantly, listen to student voices. You must include students who are underrepresented by the system. You must take into account all of the families that will be affected. There is a clear division in Tacoma through neighborhoods and in schools. If you do not see that, you are part of the problem. If this doesn't affect you, it will affect your neighbor and friends from other schools. There is a population of students who do not have the privilege to be unaffected by the consequences of returning to in-person learning. Some of us already experienced the pain of losing one to this pandemic. Your motto is "Every Student, Every Day." But there's a population of us that's being left out. We are speaking up right now. I implore you to seriously consider staying online to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Key. Next speaker, Tara Ryan, regarding student concerns about the hybrid plan.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Tara Ryan. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a 10th grader at Foss, enrolled in the IB program. I want to thank you in advance for actively listening to me today. Myself and my family members have health-related risks to contracting COVID-19, as well as exposure through essential services. I know I am not alone in my risks and fears, and I need you to know how many students in our community, like me, are so scared. According to a survey of nearly 200 middle and high school TPS students, by Voices of the Future Tacoma, 78% are concerned about returning. These students represent 16 of the 23 Tacoma High School and Middle Schools. They express fears about danger to their lives and those of their family members, being forced back into an environment where they are harassed, increased burden on their guardians to transport them safely because the bus is too much of a risk, damage done to their chances of academic success, which will directly determine their future, and worries about knowing it would be impossible to follow all CDC guidelines in their school building, and so much more. We, the students, know the value of being in person with our teachers and peers, but there are so many reasons it is not possible to return safely currently. I long for the routine and safety and community that being in the school building provides, but hybrid will disrupt routine, degrade what little safety families have scraped together, and put more communities in danger. Tacoma Public Schools has made a promise to this community to leave no child behind, and we implore you not to leave us behind now. As you will hear other students today echo, Tacoma Online Learning is not a solution, and it is not an option for all students. Not only is there a cap on enrollment, but it is not available for students with international baccalaureate studies like myself. The negative repercussions of this unfortunate decision will extend past parents, teachers, and students, and into the greater community. In Washington, according to a report by the Department of Health, rates of vaccination are low for Hispanic, non-Hispanic Black, and non-Hispanic multiracial people. Vaccination is integral to returning safely, and this low vaccination means that it will spread further to our communities of color. In comparing Foss with Wilson, 70% of students are of color. 70% of students at Foss are of color, while only 47% at Wilson. Enforcing us into hybrid not only deny Foss students of their community, but their classes. 77% of Foss students are low-income compared to 43.8% of Wilson students. You are telling myself and my low-income friends of color that we are not worth your consideration, and that our families are not worth protecting. If the 606 Foss students are not enough, consider that 64% of Foss students are people of color. You need to halt your plans to move to hybrid. I acknowledge that you are in an unfortunate position due to the dependence of a piece of $668 million in federal funding, which is dependent on a reopening plan, but that is no excuse to endanger our community. As a student at my Tacoma school, how much is their life, mother's life, worth?
Thank you.
Makisha Consolo, please.
Hi, my name is Makisha Consolo, and I am an IB senior school, IB student at Foss High School. I am here today about returning back to school in person via hybrid, specifically with concerns about transparency and communication between districts, schools, and families. During this time, more than ever, it is critical that information concerning COVID is readily available when possible, especially when discussing going back to school in person. Representing both my peers and my own concerns, we ask that the district set a strict and clear standard in regard to how the schools and districts disseminate information. For example, in the Hybrid Learning FAQ page concerning hybrid plans, when selecting the tab "Who is on my school's safety committee, and can I see their plan for returning to school?", it says, and I quote, "Each school has longstanding safety committee in place, as well as a plan for return to school. Contact your school for specific details on its plan." It may sound reasonable, however, would it not be more beneficial to have information more readily available, such as a link connecting to said plans per school, instead of having a standard to have said plans clearly identifiable in each high school's website? And yes, each school does have a link titled "Your Hybrid Questions Answered." However, it returns to the same page, Hybrid Learning FAQ, and provides no new information. The district has said each building has a plan, however, families and students have not been made aware what specific plans will be to keep them safe. Having their plans clearly stated in the websites will help families make informed decisions. Secondly, another question concerning masks states, "If a staff member or student refuses to wear a mask," we ask that people or the COVID building supervisor, in most cases, the supervisor is a school principal. Why is there no clear answer as to what the procedure or possible consequence will be? Are we to suspect that each school will have a different standard? We are also concerned that the COVID supervisor may be the principal. While we are sure that they will have the best interest at heart of both their families and students, does it not raise concern that someone who may have to report COVID cases in their students be someone previously or currently employed by the district, instead of a more unbiased employee who isn't risking their career to be hired outside from the district, such as the health official or someone else with more knowledge? Lastly, when asked, "Was the decision to reopen schools based on local rate data for all racial groups with all voices considered and included?" The district website says, and I quote, "The decision to start bringing students back to school is based on guidance issued December 16 by government J. Inslee, the State Department of Health, and the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. Why, if it is every student, every day, were students and families not consulted in this decision? We ask that the district reevaluate their decision to return to school teaching before hearing, not before hearing, and taking into account all voices of the communities that would be put back in risk by returning to school, especially the Black and Brown communities of our Tacoma Public School family. Please reconsider your decision and take into account all the voices that are being unheard right now. Students will be put back in risk by going back to school, and Tacoma Online does have a limited capacity and is not available for IB students. Thank you for your time, and please reconsider."
Thank you. Unique Edders, regarding academic concerns focused around moving into hybrid learning and the disadvantages many students will be facing. Unique?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
School, an institution for educating children. What value does this definition hold when the board would go as far as to risk limiting the educational resources and opportunities of students for a few federal dimes? The process of transitioning into hybrid learning is inequitable, extremely so when looking at the educational disadvantages it puts many students in. One major factor at hand is the teacher instruction time that will be cut shorter significantly for high school students. While in remote learning, students attend a full week of teacher-instructed classes. The hybrid plan you guys have set in place goes about students returning to school in person for two days a week, with our full schedule being cut in half and shared between those two days. Though we'll be in school twice a week, we receive one day of instructional time. How is it fair to limit our four days into one? Another aspect at hand are the IB students that make up a large margin of Foss's population. Tacoma Online is being pushed by the board for students that do not wish to move into hybrid learning. However, Tacoma Online does not offer IB classes. What happens to our juniors and seniors doing full IB that do not wish to return? What happens to the students doing part IB that do not wish to return? As a student with a mother in her late 50s and a father in his mid-60s doing all AP and IB classes, what happens to me when I do not wish to return? The other spin on Tacoma Online is the limited space that it has. What is the plan when majority of your students switch to Tacoma Online and it can no longer house any more students? What then happens to the majority of the students who do not wish to return, but now do not have Tacoma Online as an option? This is not being discussed. Another thing that I'd like to mention is the fact that for sophomores, moving into hybrid learning, we will be shortly starting our S-Back testing soon after. How is it fair to push us in, limit our time with our teachers, and then start testing us on top of that? Tacoma's motto is "Every Student, Every Day." When did a few federal dimes and barely meeting CDC's guidelines change that? If you cannot take into consideration your students' voices, which we are presenting to you today, then you are a part of the problem. Please consider giving us the choice to stay remote. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sima Amor Amaron. Sima Amaron.
Hello, thank you. Board of Directors, Superintendent, and Deputy Superintendent, good evening. My name is Dr. Dususume Amor. I also go by Sima. Thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment this evening. While I pay attention to the moves this board and our district makes, it's unlikely you've been paying attention to me. So, I'm going to share a little bit about myself. My doctorate and master's degrees are both in public health. I also hold a bachelor's degree in early childhood and family studies. In 2018, I made a public comment on a TPS board meeting asking you to approve the superintendent's recommendation for adopting the family life and sexual health curriculum for students in Tacoma. This curriculum is also known as FLYSH. I'm thankful the vote passed, and educators have since been teaching this FLYSH curriculum each year for students in grades five through 12. Thanks for your leadership. TPS is on track to meet or already meeting the sexual health component of Senate Bill 5395. I acknowledge there's been some turnover on this board since I was here a few years ago. I've paid attention, and I appreciate your continued leadership and foresight when it comes to public health for our students and community. With the recent passage of Restorandum 90 this fall, many districts across Washington State are figuring out how they will respond to Senate Bill 5395. Meanwhile, thanks for your leadership. Our Tacoma community is leading the way when it comes to prioritizing support for implementing state expectations for Senate Bill 5395. Thank you for passing a social-emotional learning policy and adopting the line SBL curriculum in 2018. Because of your leadership, TPS is already meeting the social-emotional learning expectations, Senate Bill 5395 line items as goals for the 2223 school year. Senate Bill 5395 is about developmentally appropriate learning for students, with a focus on social-emotional learning at the younger ages and sexual health education at the older grade. Overall, I've done my research and learned that TPS is already on track to meet or is actively meeting the expectations outlined in Senate Bill 5395, which is very impressive. Like I said, I've been paying attention and been watching all the moves you've been making, and I appreciate your leadership to the health and safety of our students and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Rowan Ali, regarding concerns returning to the hybrid plan in schools, specifically the mental and social disadvantages for students.
Yes, thank you. My name is Rowan Ali, and I'm also a senior at Foss High School. And today I represent the concerns of my fellow classmates on the new hybrid learning system, more specifically on how it will affect our mental health. After hearing from all the students here, there's a clear understanding to different impacts that hybrid learning will have on us, such as our education, our physical health, and on a broader spectrum, equity and transparency that this program is set on. With all that being said, mental health is no exception. The pandemic has had serious consequences for the cognitive, emotional, and social development of our children and youth. And we all know that this is vital to the success of students and schools in their everyday lives. Now, to paint the image more clearly, I'd like us all to take a look at the recent CDC study done on the mental health of youth in Washington. It estimates that since the pandemic, 1 in 4 people under the age of 18 have struggled with suicidal thoughts. On top of that, mental health-related visits to emergency departments from children ages 5 through 17, between April and October 2020, increased by 24 to 31% compared to the same time period in 2019. Now, with the goal of in-person learning to have us as students interact with one another after nearly a year and a half of quarantine, however, with the strict safety regulations being set up, they don't allow much of the socialization aspect to be fulfilled nor enacted. Another thing to consider is by bringing students to a building where they are not only at risk of catching a virus, even with the precautions set, but also where the culture and environment of the schools are apocalyptic is extremely detrimental to our ability to focus and starve in lessons and coursework. The constant reminder to stay safe, distant from one another, and to keep ourselves sanitized and clean always be a huge stressor on our minds as long as we're in that building. No doubt, school is an essential part of our lives, as it is a piece of a puzzle to our character and individuals, but also creates lifelong friendships, lessons to be learned, and memories that we carry for the rest of our lives. We went from meeting with friends at lunch, hanging out at friggin' teachers' classrooms, the pep rallies where the teachers dropped their facade of authority and joined in school spirit, to at-home pre-recorded assemblies, 11:59 deadlines, barely any interaction with anyone, staring at a computer screen for eight-plus hours, and wondering if we're ever going to get back to our normal lives. And the immediate response is to bring us back to school. Not exactly. The solution that's needed is to not jeopardize the routine we have gotten accustomed to and have created. And quite frankly, even that isn't the best, as I am and many seniors alike would love to create those little memories we can out of our last year in high school. But then again, there's a global pandemic roaming right outside our door. And my last note to you all, if the 1 in 4 teenagers who debate the worth of their lives because of a late assignment and number on the screen, or the children ages 5 through 17 whose trips to the ER are now data on my speech means anything to you, for I can guarantee that they will only rise if we continue with hybrid learning, I implore you all to step back, hear us out, and listen. COVID already took so much. Don't let it take our youth, our future. You say every day, every student, there won't be any student, there won't be every day, if we don't look at this hybrid learning a little more closely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Trevor Kaguchi, but he decided to just turn it into a written comment. So attached to the board agenda under option two will be the statement from Trevor Kaguchi. Thank you. That's all.
I was having trouble unmuting. I just want to thank all of our members of the community, students in particular, who signed up to speak tonight. The board, again, takes your comments very seriously, and we consider them as we make plans to move forward. So thank you again for your comments. Moving on to item number five, Recognition of Staff, Students, and Community. 5.1, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center. And I'll pass it over to, I think, Ms. Scott Thomas.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome, all right. I'm Amanda Scott Thomas, the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and I am here to present the Gold Star. Greetings to Superintendent Santoro, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, Madam Board President, and the rest of the directors. It's my pleasure to present to you the Gold Star Community Partner Award for February. As you all know, Tacoma Public School defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools can't do it alone, and in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, I present to you for this award, the Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center. It is a nonprofit human service agency whose mission is to provide culturally relevant support services to children and families through daycare, ECAP, and DSHS contracted services. Their center strives to ensure a balance between a positive relationship between teachers and students and the academic development of a child. Tacoma Public Schools and the Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center have a longstanding partnership in support of students. In non-COVID times, the center offers before and after-school childcare to students from kindergarten to fifth grade. Since we have entered the pandemic, the cultural center, the Hope Center, has offered daycare to over 65 of our TPS students. This specialized and personalized support includes art, dance, and music. In addition, skilled staff work alongside each student to ensure that they have the materials, space, and support they need to be successful in remote learning. If a person had a chance to visit, you would see students practicing social distancing, wearing masks, and productively working with their teacher and classmates on their computer. The adults are close to offer help when needed, and while you can't see the smiles on the faces because they're covered by masks, it's evident that they're there. The center is staffed with caring and compassionate adults. Gail Neal and Turner Cagle provide the leadership and oversight of the staff. They have the huge hearts and continually search for ways to improve their servants for students. Just recently, TPS and the Hope Just recently, TPS and the Hope Center developed an MOU to commemorate and solidify the relationship. In addition to the work they do every day at the center, they also partner with countless other organizations across Tacoma to improve outcomes for students. They are part of our early learning network and participate in professional development focused on preschool-age students. So we're grateful to the Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center for all they do for students and family, for the students and families of Pierce County, especially Tacoma Public Schools. So with that, we recommend that the Partnership Office recommends that the Board of Directors recognize Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center as our Gold Star Community Partner for February 2021.
Are they going to say anything? Do you want to speak? You guys can unmute yourselves and speak if you'd like to.
Can you guys hear us?
Actually, hon, I think somebody might need to mute. Yes.
Thank you for your partnership because without this partnership, we couldn't do it. And it's bigger than Ms. Gail and I. We have a full team of people working behind the scenes to make all this happen. And so I just wanted to make sure that all of us are honored here at Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center. And we're going to show everybody real quick. So right here, we have Keenan Joyce. He's my partner in crime. We've been working together for 15 years. I have Xavier Pleasant back here. He's our music and movement instructor. And so our kids are able to learn through the music and arts. We have Tracy. She's our education supervisor. We have Melanie Jones. We have Bryson Neal. We have Roxy Magno. She's our family support. Behind us here, we have Brian Neal. He's our operations. And in the back over there, we have a literacy coach, and he's the Shay in the back there. And so there's also other people here that aren't here, but I just wanted to make sure we honor everybody that was here. And thank you guys for your support, and this is going to be a lifelong partnership. Oh, we have a couple of students here too as well. Nick, hi. We got Tracy Neal. Oh, and Cordae's holding the camera. We also have a past student that's a grown man now that came to support us as well. And so, thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you for the partnership. And I just want to acknowledge.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Getting to do these recognitions are my favorite parts of the meetings. And I just want to offer that whenever I can, I always like to give a plug for the fact that we have local leaders who are leading the charge for the next generation. So I can't help but call out that Mr. Kagle's Lincoln Abe. I think Keenan may have gone to Foss. If I got that right, all of my class, my generations, I just love the fact that across different areas of our work, our partners often are homegrown Tacoma leaders. So I just want to give you guys a shout out. And I also want to say, just take the chance to say it. I remember very distinctly one afternoon walking on MLK. I think I was going to Tacoma Housing Authority around that time. And I remember seeing Keenan with an army of kids around him who are all just walking to their destination and singing together. So just the image that you showed tonight of all the members of your center's family, I think clearly shows the kind of spirit and energy that you pass on to the kids. And even when no one knows, when you don't know that people are watching, the energy and love that you show for the kids, even when you're out and about in the community shows too. So I just want to thank you for your partnership. Any other members of the board have comments or want to offer any thoughts? Don't see any, but I know they all feel the same way I do. Thank you for your partnership and the work that you've worked.
I couldn't hit mute fast enough. My bad. I just want to thank everybody over there for the amazing work and the great partnership. A great while ago, I used to work there with visitation supervising, but I always noticed that inside the building, there was just always magic happening. Students were learning, and folks were caring for children as if they were their own. So, you know, for you guys to be in partnership with TPS is amazing. Obviously, we hope that this continues forever and ever. You guys are amazing. I just want to personally thank you for the work that you're doing for the students in Tacoma. Thank you.
Dr. Garcia, I see your hand.
I just want to echo. I want to thank Gail and the team over there. It's, you know, our partnership, Marie's jumping on. I know there's other staff member that would just echo that. It is truly about partnership. It's never about what we want or what they want. It's always about what's best for kids and how do we start there and how do we work together collectively. It's been there before COVID. It's been modified during COVID, and you have our word that it'll be there after COVID. And so this is what partnership is. So we're honored to recognize you folks tonight, but we also recognize that this is what you do every day. And so we're extremely thankful. Thank you.
Marie, I see you're on video. Did you want to speak?
I just want to echo Josh's sentiments, Deputy Superintendent's sentiments. And I just can't tell you how much it is truly an honor to work closely with Gail and Turner and the whole team. And they are taking care of our kids. They really are, and we can't be more grateful.
Superintendent Santoro, I see your hand too.
I was just going to echo the same sentiments, but I wanted to say this crew was so gracious and invited us in so that we could see what was going on. And it just warms your heart. Students taking it so seriously to get their learning done. I got to hear a song and a music presentation, so they are definitely doing the work. Thanks so much for inviting us in, and thank you for the work that you're doing. We appreciate it. You're muted, Andrea.
All right. I was just saying, we'll move on to item 5.2. I want to thank you again and appreciate the partnership. 5.2 is recognition of Dr. Dolores Silas, Superintendent Santoro.
Yes, in collaboration with the Board of Directors and on behalf of our entire community, I get to take this opportunity to recognize and honor Dr. Dolores Silas. Beginning July 1, thanks to this Board of Director, she will be the new namesake of what is now known as Wichita Wilson High School. She is a Tacoma trailblazer for sure, and we're going to get an opportunity to hear from her. But before we do, I just wanted to say how much fun I had speaking with Dr. Silas. And she is a delight to talk to and is so committed and dedicated to our students. And we can't wait to hear what she has to say. So I'm going to have her play, make a few words that she recorded on tape. After, I say, "The superintendent recommends that the School Board of Directors and the Tacoma community recognize and honor the groundbreaking accomplishments of Dr. Dolores Silas and celebrate her as the new namesake of Wilson High School." Kevin, will you play the tape, please?
First of all, I would like to thank the board for this recognition, and certainly our superintendent, and the students who saw the need for the change. I responded in tears that it was such a shock. It was something I did not ask for. It is something that to be recognized for, and long after I'm gone, it will still be there. I am most humble and grateful for this opportunity, but I want them to know that in my thinking, it was a need, a long past need to be made. And I admire them for their courage in taking this step. It is not easy to make a decision as you have made as far as the school's concerned, but you did it because you knew it was the right thing to do. Keep that in mind. Do the right thing, and we will come out fine. I'm looking for the day, which I don't think that I will see, when it will not be a matter of color, it will be a matter of right. That's when we as Americans can say that I am an American, period. Not a black American, not a Chinese American, American. That is the day that we're waiting for and hope that we have. Nothing I have done to this date was by myself. The village is the community that went with me, that made everything possible. There's someone else who did this before me that I'm able to say, "Let's do it again. It's the right thing to do." And so that is my feeling on that. And hopefully, our youth, our students, will have the same kind of growth inside of them that said, "This is wrong. Let us make it right." And that is the day that we all come together. Again, I must say thank you to the committee, to the principal, to our superintendent, and mostly all, to the board, and then to the community as a whole. This could not have happened, and I'm aware of that. I'm aware of the fact that they're saying, some are saying, "No, this is not the right thing to do." But the voices, other voices out there, strong voices are saying, "If not now, when?" I recall being, when Tom Dixon, formerly of the Urban League, and I were invited to the White House by then-President Jimmy Carter. And after he finished talking, there was a silence. And then from the back of the room, Tom Dixon rose and said, "Mr. President, if not now, when?" And I've never forgotten that. If not now, when?
Thank you, Superintendent Santoro. I just want to appreciate you and the team for going out and getting her words directly. It's been a very, it's been my privilege and honor to participate in this process of considering the name change and to receive the recommendation from the committee and receive it in the way that it landed. So I really appreciate the fact that we were able to capture her reaction while she's still here and to have that as part of the collection of history of Tacoma School District. So thank you again, and the team, for going out and doing that. I want to open up for any reactions from other members of the board. I won't call on you all. I won't assume that you all want to speak, so feel free to chime in if you'd like to speak.
I would just like to say thank you to Superintendent Santoro for going and getting that video. It is precious. She was so moving, and I think really just listening to her and watching her speak, you really, I feel so proud that we've made this choice, and she is the right person at the right time. And I'm so glad that she was with us to be able to experience it and to also, I think, speak to the issue in her own words. So thank you for capturing that with the team from, I'm sure, the video team that went with you. And I just feel honored that we've been able to do this. So thank you very much. And I, you know, I think she'll resonate with me. If not now, when is absolutely our call to action in our community today. So thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Seeing done? Or Director Fisher?
Yeah, I was just, I was just, I just wanted to echo, you know, just a thanks for going out and making that happen because just to be straight up with you, we get beat up a lot. And it's really amazing to see Dr. Silas share in her own words what this means to her, even though it's not about her. You feel what I'm saying? So I just appreciate you, Carla, and Josh, and whoever else had a hand in this because we needed to see that.
Yeah, I just want to directly call out Casey and his work on videography. You are a genius, and we appreciate you. They're, like they always say, "It takes a whole team to make this ship run," and everybody plays their tremendously significant part. So thank you, Casey, for your work. Director Leon, I think you wanted to speak as well.
Yeah, just thank you, Dr. Silas, for allowing us the time to hear your words and really the sacrifice and the hard work you've given this community and beyond. And, you know, she stands on the shoulders of others that have worked hard to get her where she got to. So we know that there's more to be done for equity. This is a great step. Thank you, Dr. Silas.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to item number six, the superintendent's report. Well, before moving on, I just want to say again a note about process. We took action to officially change the name at our last business meeting, but the team is working to really operationalize and to develop a plan for implementing that change. So I imagine that we'll come back probably at the end of the summer or maybe even before that with some more details about the transition. But we'll look forward to getting input from the team at Wilson currently, High School, about how the change will proceed. But with that, moving on to item six, 6.1, COVID update from the superintendent.
I asked Dr. Garcia to give you a real uplifting report, COVID update. Make it uplifting, Dr. Garcia.
Oh yeah, that's a really significant challenge. So gentlemen, can you bring up the update? I'm not sure if this will be uplifting. Not a lot has changed, but we'll give you some updates of information of where we are. Slideshow. So what I do think is uplifting is these are our students, and this is what it looks like out on campuses. And so we wanted to give you some up-to-date pictures, and we know that not everybody can see there of how our students and staff are responding. Next slide, please. So I wanted to let you folks know that there have been no changes in the state's toolkit for decision-making. We are currently in the moderate phase. I think as a county, we dipped just below 200 cases per 100,000 this week and continue to be there. So this is the current guidance that we are following that comes from the State Department of Health, the Governor's Office, and the Pierce County Health Department. Next slide, please. So I want to remind folks that a few things about how we do make decisions. So there are a number of resources that we consider in there. So we consider things like LNI guidance, OSPI guidance, the Tacoma-Pierce County Health Department Toolkit, the Pierce County Health Department Guidance for Schools, the Department of Health Guidance. We have CBOs and MOUs, which all shape our return plans, and then our hybrid resources. We want to remind the folks across the board, as we go down this journey together, we are continually reminding folks to mask up. We're asking folks to continue to use the Family App for attestation and stay abreast of local and new opportunities. We do want folks to stay home if you don't feel well. And then we do want our folks, although there's information that is on the district website, and we're trying to have connected conversations for consistency, there is information on your schools regarding their return dates and cohort lists. Next slide, please. So here's where our current status. Pre-K is currently in our cohorts. Kindergartners and first graders are currently four days a week. Grade two is in cohorts. Special ed continues in their small groups. Various other small groups in secondary schools. High school sports have begun, and then we also, as we've shared with you, we have elementary virtual ELOs that are continuing as well. These are just a few of the highlights of what it looks like in our current status. Next slide, please. So this shouldn't be new information, but we want to remind folks what's next and what's coming. So what's next? Next slide. Our elementary, starting on Monday, second graders will come in four days a week, and our third graders will join us two days a week. Monday, March 15, fourth graders will come two days a week. And Monday, March 22, fifth graders will come two days a week. And then reminder that grades three through 12 will remain in a hybrid as long as the numbers allow for the remainder of the year. So grades three through 12 will not be coming back more than a hybrid. Next slide, please. Our middle schools, our sixth graders will start in Cohort B starting Thursday, March 4. March 8, sixth grade Cohort A will come, and then we'll have student conferences, parent-student conferences happening on the 11th and 12th, I believe, are the dates. Don't quote me on the exact dates. I apologize. But that Thursday and Friday. And so that's why there's that break in that cohort. And all of our conferences will be virtual. And all of our conferences will be virtual unless our families and our staff need an in-person where we can manage that on a case by case basis. Monday, March 22nd will be seventh grade, our seventh graders will return on campus in a hybrid. And then Monday, March 29th, our eighth graders will come on campus in a hybrid setting. Next slide please. Our high schoolers are scheduled to return if the numbers allow us to on grades 12 will begin our seniors first on March 15th. Our freshmen will join them on March 22nd and then on March 29th, grades 10 and 11 will be on campuses. Next slide please. So some other things that we want to remind folks, we will continue to explore COVID testing opportunities and vaccinations. So this week we facilitated our second. Staff vaccination for eligible staff. Each one of those vaccination clinics have been approximately 200 staff members. We have also started voluntary COVID testing for staff is available and we'll be doing that on Wednesdays. And there's information for staff available on the hub. We have a number of spring activities that are going on. The Tacoma online registration for the 2021, 2022 year has begun. So we're looking for families that already know that they want that as an option. They can register online and you can do that at their school's website. High school sports have launched, graduation planning, and I want to keep on reminding our seniors and stuff that we are planning for an in-person graduation at this time. We do not have all the details, but that is our plan and we've been working closely with the Tacoma Dome. And while several other options to find the best way to effectively implement that graduation plan. So please lock and hold your dates for graduation. We are planning an in-person graduation. We are starting to work on scheduling at our schools and beginning of the 21, 22 school year. So although folks are. Finishing up this year, this is the springtime where we're also looking forward to next year. As I mentioned, grades three through 12 will remain in cohorts. The board is planning their, begin their board business meetings here in the month of March to start in person and more information will come there. Summer learning, we are planning for both in-person and remote learning opportunities. And so families. Really probably in the month of April and May will start to be able to release. More information about which opportunities are available, which sites to offer summer learning opportunities. And those will be opportunities at the elementary, middle school and high school levels. And then we are also planning jumpstart activities for the, the fall. In the legislative process, there has been some bills that have moved forward. One of them is graduation requirement changes. And so we'll be working with the board over the next few weeks to look at what are the implications once that is signed by the governor and we're closely monitoring other bills. And I believe that is our report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions, reactions from members of the board? I'll start with Vice President Von Bright.
Oh, thank you Deputy Superintendent. A lot of that was reminders, stuff we've heard before. I know that one of the new pieces of news. Well, there were a couple of new pieces, but one of them was about the board and meeting in person, which I know we've been working hard. We couldn't. Meet in person until the OPMA, the. Can't remember what it all stands for, but Open Public Meetings Act.
Exactly.
Requirements prohibited the board from meeting in person. So we've had to meet. And we've been struggling as to how to, how to go back to some in-person meetings and still have public access and the like. So. Bear with us. We will be back in person hopefully soon. But I also just want to say it was so great to see photos of those young ones, young kids in classrooms looking happy and engaged. And. I know I've been chatting with superintendent and, and she's been out on, on the town, you know, going to visit schools and. Been sharing some great stories of, of how the kids are really enjoying being back together. So that's, that's good news. I think other than that, I don't have any comments.
Director Keating?
Well, I was, the one thing that I wanted to comment on, Dr. Garcia, you were talking about the graduation. Requirements and I'm hoping that Vice President Von Bright might remember. I know in our call, the WASD call today, they're. The state board is taking public comment, but I can't remember the date of when that's happening. I feel like it's. Next week, but there if, there is a process where people can, the public can give input. On the graduation requirements to the states, the state education board. But I just don't know. I don't remember when that date was.
So the, the process will be is just for those at home is the governor signs the legislation and then there's another agency that. Has the, some interpretation of the ability of what those rules are that aligns with that legislation. So Director Keating, so. It is my understanding though that, you know, this will go pretty quickly. And so we'll, we'll, because it is designed to assist seniors this year. And there are some things and so plan on us coming back to you with some policy recommendations that based off of when the bill is actually signed and then what are those rules?
Director Strozer?
Nothing is done.
Thank you, Director Leon.
Yeah, thanks. Got some comments, but I think this is probably a good place to. Think acknowledge and talk about some of the issues maybe that were brought up by our students that spoke today. I know it's, we don't immediately respond to public comment at the time it's being given, but I feel like. Our community has a lot of questions and I think I'd like to take some time to try to hopefully reassure folks, not everything can be reassured to everybody's. You know, perfect. Perfect status. I realize that, but. I've got some questions that I want to. Try to get some clarification from, from the cabinet here too, but I wrote down some, some of the comments. There was concern that we weren't taking all the proper precautions from many of the student comments, but. I've seen and I've read reports and read some of the. Plans and it's been in the schools to see proper precautions being. Being followed. And I have many teacher friends that are telling me they're being followed also. So I do believe that they are being followed is. You know, every guidance that is put out, but. Possible at every school, it's probably impossible depending on how physical spaces are spaced out. I do think that there was a point there about getting. The safety committee plans more easily accessible by the community. So I'd like to hear. I'm not done yet, but I'd like to hear from superintendent or team, how can we get those plans just printed and put on the website and not get people? This, you know, inadvertent run around that probably wasn't intended, but can we get those? Right front and center to read them. Can we get an answer to that?
Sure, that makes sense. You know, we can go back and check. My guess is that different schools have a different way that they are accessible. I know a lot of our teachers have been asking and are accessible. So we can check on that. That's easy to take care of.
Okay. They probably are accessible in different ways, but.
Sure.
Makes it hard for. Look and find that. So let's please make that more accessible. That was a very important point that the student brought up. Their proper mass use, mask usage was brought up and as you know, a code, a standard of dress code equivalence was brought up. I'll tell you, I was at the link, I was at Jefferson Elementary last week doing a tour and watched pre K to second graders. Just be stellar at mask wear, right? So there were some. In classes, specialized kids that weren't wearing masks, that weren't able to wear masks, but all the ones that were. Expected to wear masks were just doing a great job with it. Teachers and spacing, everything was wonderful. The way they were lining up, the way they were eating, the way they were doing recess. They were happy. I talked to, met several, many of them. They were. The kids were just excited to be in school and telling me about some of the things that they were learning math and science and some art. So that's an elementary level. Some, some. Districts in the country have said sometimes it gets a little bit tougher as actually the kids get older. Because sometimes they may not follow the instructions as well. But I'll tell you that I've, I saw stellar mask wearing. At the Lincoln football game. I'm the volunteer doctor for Lincoln Stadium. And I was at Lincoln game last week and I, I saw, I was sneaking around trying to. Peek on kids and seeing if they're keeping their masks on. And I saw one below the nose one time when they were kind of in semi group areas. And they, when they needed to get a drink of water, they went to the end of the sidelines away from everybody else, pulled their mask down, got their drink of water. Put their bottles back down. They had their own water bottles. They kept their distance during their. Meetings that they were having before and after the game, they were really spread out. The coaches all wore their mask, you know, the whole time. So I just want to talk about safety and how I saw just. Safety protocol being followed really well there. I know that's not in the classroom. I did talk to a few kids that are doing kind of in school. I don't know what the term is called, but some kids don't have great internet. So they're, they got access to some schools. To do that in a classroom setting where they're supervised with a, a teacher or a para. And they told me that their mental health has improved so much. The fact that they have been able to do their work in there, in that environment. And, and kids will, you know, one of the comments from one of the, one of the students said that you're not going to be able to socialize or have any. Good mental health outcomes because you have masks on, you're six feet apart. I disagree with that. And kids are able to socialize with their masks on, but still be safe. So we're going to see that. That improvement in the mental health burden, the depression, the suicidality, the domestic violence that we're not finding and picking up right now. None of the students brought that up, but that's an important part that we're seeing in, in my emergency rooms and my clinics and my partners. I've got colleagues and friends that are working at cities like, that are open with open schools in Cleveland. Baltimore and. Sorry, where's my other? Cleveland, Baltimore are the two. And then North Carolina, another one that's working there that have not. Seen any increase in any, any mental health issues. And you know, there, there's no hard studies yet because there's, there's not enough data and time yet for this. But just anecdotally, what they've seen is a couple of them work in the ERs and a couple of them in clinics. They've seen less problems with. Suicidality in the kids that are coming in, just less numbers of kids and the kids that are still having problems and not the kids that are in. In school as much. They've been seeing that still in the kids that are still online. So I think that is going to get better. I'm trying to hopefully reassure some, some of the students and the families because we are, we are concerned about that too. The, I do have a question about IB. Issue that students were bringing up is, is your way to get this IB credit and the IB. Curriculum continuing to go for these kids that are FAS. It sounds like maybe that's a problem that the IB curriculum has internationally. Can you guys give us an answer for that real quick? Like I've got more to talk about. Can we hear about that? What, what can we do about IB?
So the, one of the things that is happening across the board is that we're not doing IB tests. We're doing interim assessments that are being able to be submitted online. And so we're trying to look at that number of flexibilities there. Remembered, none of us knew when, when, when schools were going to be able to come back. And so that opportunity in there. So. There is going to be situations that we're going to have to continue to work through and modify and say, so what are the options here and what does that look like? So students will still have access in that morning block at the secondary level to online instruction. And there, and that's one of the important pieces of that model is that every morning they do have online instruction. So we do feel that there's going to be a level of confidence in there too, for students to stay connected in an online version. The second half of that day, when they do come back in their cohorts, it will be up to the course teacher of what does that look like? And so there is going to be some opportunities where. Students may have reasons where they do something that's different, but the IB curriculum itself is there's not enough. Sections to offer in multiple different ways and multiple different modalities. Students will still be able to continue through their IB curriculum. They'll still be able to submit their assessments if they're, they're. Trying to submit for an IB diploma. We will help them facilitate that and meet those requirements.
We think they'll be able to then apply for and get their IB diploma. They just may not have as many choices on all the different types of classes and the way they.
This is a short window of, from basically when you think about spring break until graduation. And so. The IBO has allowed schools instead of coming in to take the test. And this happened last spring as well. You can submit the IA. Which is the, an alternative. So you basically submit a test that's scored and advanced by the classroom teacher and stuff. So students don't have to come on campus to do that. They can, they'll have that flexibility.
Okay.
So they'll still be able to meet the IB diploma requirements.
Something there is a way to, for them to get this, the diploma, continue their education. You know, many, maybe some aren't aware of the ways to, to continue this, but I, I don't think it's, it's not going to be. As smooth as it was before, obviously, but I do think it's important to, to, to those parents and those students know that it sounds like there's a way to get that to, to continue.
Director Leon? Can I, can I interrupt and just ask a follow-up question on the IB because you're moving on? So. I think one of the issues that was raised about IB was that it's not available on Tacoma online. So I guess my question back to what Dr. Leon was saying is. So it's for IB students, they don't have the option of going to Tacoma online and staying in their IB program? Is that what I was understanding? I just needed clarification on.
Yes. So students, Tacoma online does not offer IB, you know, and I'll be completely transparent. There is numerous classes Tacoma online does not offer. And so, you know, it could be a certain sections of an AP or a college in the high school or a variety of others. So it's not unique to IB. And we've, we've tried to be as transparent as possible and COVID during this time, that there are some limitations of certain classes that can't happen in there. And so up until this point, students have been able to be in a full remote setting. And so when we think about when they come back, that's was part of the, when we looked at the schedules is there are certain opportunities where students are still going to have to stay connected in a remote setting. And then there's going to be opportunities where they're going to come online. There's, we're all going to have to be somewhat nibble in, in this as we move forward. COVID is, is not the same as pre COVID about all the opportunities and as we. Allow for students. The IB testing though is a really critical element for those students, especially. If those are seniors or juniors and they're trying to get those IB scores for that IB diplomas, they will be able to do that still in a remote fashion.
Okay, thank you. So. I appreciate the clarification on that. The comment about we were maybe not analyzing the local rates and keeping an eye on that, but I want to assure everybody, we are, we're in close communication with the health department. Frequently and, and if everybody's probably keeping an eye on this too, but the infection rate has dropped below 200. For the first time, you know, December or since maybe November. So 200 per 100,000 infection rate over the past seven days. So that's a nice big drop because we were at 548, if people remember that, that day. That was, those are hard times. And they're still, they're still not easy times right now, but it was much worse and it's getting better. So. We're on the right trajectory as we're going right now. Transparency and communication was talked about. I think we talked about just trying to get that plan up on people's websites so they can have access to that. And I think that's probably where I'll, I'll stop. The mental health piece, I think you've heard me talk about it a lot. And I think that that's one of the key places where our kids are suffering. And one of your, from your slides, I think, you know, the summer learning option, hopefully we can. Expand that. We can have a lot of kids and families choose to do more of that. There's, there's some. More learning that we need to probably help catch kids up on. So I do think there's an opportunity to, to go forward there. And you know, if something unsafe happens, our district has. Contact tracing, shut things down, shut groups down if they needed to be closed down and that, that will continue to happen. Safety is, is a priority. So. Thank you. It's just, I just, it's important. I think that the students, and thank you for all those students for coming forward. Having great arguments, great descriptions of, of your concerns. And I'm not, and, and they are valid concerns. I understand. I just want to make sure that. You know, we're, we're listening to you, we're hearing you. You don't always comment back at the, at that time. And really for all people that comment, it's the same thing goes for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Leon. I see Ms. Pearson's hand up. So before I offer a couple additional comments, I want to go to Jasmine.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to. Ask another question about masks. Because it has been one of my concerns, like knowing that I might be going back to school in March. It's less about people wearing masks and more about. Are we going to be regulating what kind of masks students and staff are wearing? Because I know that. There are a lot of issues with Gator masks, masks with valves and like mesh masks. And I still, I mean, I work in a restaurant and I see people wearing. All three of those kinds of masks and they don't. Do much, if anything, to prevent the spread of COVID. So I just wanted to know what your plan was for that. what your plan was for that.
Thank you.
So what I think we can do is get the specific requirements uh, that all schools are following uh, on masks and uh, bring that to you in your next COVID update. Of, and there, there's, we have a, it, under the Tacoma Pierce County School Guidance, there is requirements for what are the minimum masks. So we'll bring you that specific language back.
And just for, and just for community transparency, I'm Dr. Garcia. If students don't have access to appropriate masks, we have those available.
We, we will provide all masks as needed. So for students and staff.
I'm Dr. Garcia. I mean, Dr. Garcia, but Director Leon.
Uh, just on the mask topic, I think it's an important place maybe to bring up that um, this, uh, there's new evidence showing that double masking is better than single masking. So a medical mask um, underneath, doesn't have to be a medical one, but it's something that's thicker. And then it can be a cloth uh, one on top to peel that onto your face. But it's got, I don't know what a gator mask is. I don't know what that term means. Uh, but it sounds like maybe it's a less than uh, um, effective one. And mesh doesn't sound like if it's, you know, doesn't sound like that's a, a good sub product. So um, look at the, there's, there are requirements, there are minimum requirements, uh, direct, Dr. Garcia talked about. So double mask though, please.
Um, I just want to do, um, thank you, um, Director Leon for the comments that you made. So I listened to the students' um, comments earlier. Almost point per point for what, about what you offered were things that I was reacting and responding to too, and things that I hope that we would clarify in the COVID update. So thank you for walking through some of those. And I just want to reiterate our um, commitment to listening to students and to thank them for coming tonight. But I also want to convey that um, sometimes um, we're not sure if the right communication or correct information is getting to you when you need it. So this, I think tonight was um, surfaced for me, examples of when you needed access to more information or you needed to be presented differently, or you need to see it at a different timing to make sure that you are most uh, as up to speed as you could be on all the details of the return plan. So I think um, we are still focused on getting started to get better. And as um, the hybrid plan rolls out however it does, we will learn things from day one. We'll be learning and incorporating those um, learnings and lessons into how we um, move back into school. So again, thank you for the comments and hope that um, some of the um, increased access to information about the plans that we hope to provide. And just um, you all experiencing what it's like to be back in the buildings helps us all learn together about what we need to do to make sure everyone feels safe, everyone is safe. And that we continue to move forward together. So thank you. Any other uh, last comments about the um, COVID-19 update? Seeing none, we will move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. Was there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about items on the consent agenda? And just for the public's um, knowledge, the consent agenda typically contains lots of regular items that we take routine action on. So the board does see this agenda in advance. We do review these items, but we just act on them all in one action. So um, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Are you opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number eight, policy matters. There are no policy matters tonight. Um, item number nine, financial report. A quarterly presentation on the financial health of the district will be made. Um, monthly financial statements can be found on the district website. And tonight, we do have a financial presentation. So welcome, Ms. Medina.
Thank you so much. So it is time for our quarterly update and we have scheduled these out for you so that we have an opportunity to touch base with you and the public about what's happening with our finances and give you any updates on uh, critical information related to the way that we manage our, our books. Uh, and I, I'm hoping that Tom can bring up our presentation. Um, the first thing that I want to talk to you about in our presentation is going to be a change to the way our ratings are being um, managed. And so there are a number of different rating agencies out there. They're like credit report agencies. You have TransUnion and you have, you know, for your credit ratings or Experian. Uh, we have these bond ratings that come through either Standard and Poor's or Moody's. Those are the two companies that we participate in ratings with. If you'll go to the first slide for me. Thank you. Um, and so we have received a notification that across the country, Moody's is revising their um, their ratings. And this is not something that happens very often. Um, in fact, I have never seen this happen, but um, what we're finding is that a number of school districts across the country are going to be reevaluated uh, and potentially either upgraded or downgraded in their ratings depending upon the criteria that they're adopting. So on the left-hand side of the screen, what you'll see are the methodologies that used to be employed by Moody's to make a determination about the credit worthiness of any particular school district. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the changes. They're really meant to be illustrative, uh, not to get too detailed in it with you. But what we're finding is that there's about 1,200 school districts across the country who have been slated for a downgrade, and we are one of those 1,200. Um, there are 98 school districts here in Washington that, that will be in the same boat as we are as it relates to a downgrade. Currently, we're in AA2, will be going down to an AA3. And, and this happens periodically in other industries. So I have seen this happen in other industries. It hasn't happened in school districts that I've, that I have been aware of. But what Moody's is really responding to is the changing environment of school districts. And I think that the, this had been in play before the pandemic. But what they recognized is that, you know, a lower fund balance or a lower fund balance in relationship to what the Government Finance Officers Association might suggest is a strong fund balance. Uh, or a uh, decrease in enrollment changes your credit worthiness. Uh, in addition to that, maybe some of the things happening within your state can also play a, a factor in your credit worthiness. And one of the things that's been brought up to us as we've met with rating agencies in the past has been the McCleary conversation and, and how McCleary might impact school district funding over time. And so those are things that they want to be able to incorporate into the credit worthiness of school districts. And, and that's what we're experiencing is, is what that looks like for you know, a number of school districts across the country. Doesn't mean that we've done anything wrong or bad. Um, but it does mean that this will be a change in the way that we're rated. We are so fortunate that we went and sold bonds last um, fall and that we no longer have to worry about this. And there's a benefit. We get to participate in the state's credit rating. And so we're able to utilize the state's credit rating as, as our credit rating, and this doesn't play as big a factor. However, when it gets down to individual investors making decisions about whether or not they want to participate in our bond, it does play an, an impact on whether or not people are excited or interested in, in um, buying our bonds. And when that happens and there's lower interest, then that's when the costs incre- increase for school districts. So um, I feel fortunate that we are pretty much done selling bonds for an extended period of time. Who knows what things will look like in the four, five, six years before we're back out in the bond market. Uh, unless there's a significant refinance opportunity that comes our way, but we just did that too. So I think that's probably pretty unlikely as well. Uh, and, and so I wanted to make sure you had an update on that. If you'll go to that next slide for me, Tom. I also wanted to give you a brief overview of something that's coming down the road. It is so hard for me to believe that it's been four years since our last um, enrichment levy was passed. And when it was last passed, it was just a maintenance and operations levy or an educational programs and operations levy uh, back in 2018. And we began collecting on that levy that was passed by our voters in 2019. It expires in 2022. So this year is the year that we begin all the preparations for a ballot measure that would go out likely next February for collections that will begin in 2023. You'll see on the left-hand side of the screen, the amounts that we had collected previously. Um, one thing that has changed significantly since the last levy is the calculation methodology is significantly different. So we will be um, collecting the lesser of $2,500 per student or a dollar fifty per 1,000 of assessed value. And that calculation is uh, a new method that we will have to employ as we're doing uh, determination on what we're going to ask our voters for in our educational programs and operations levy. And then in addition to the new calculation uh, methodology, we also have to report to OSPI our enrichment activities for approval before they will allow us to create the ballot measure. And so we would expect that that will occur um, sometime in the, in the summertime, and we will prepare our enrichment levy activities and, and they're high-level activities of what we're going to do, but we do have to seek OSPI approval. If you'll go to the next slide for me. Um, another thing that has been um, working in the back end of what we've been doing and planning is trying to make a determination about how to handle our technology levy. When we went out for our last technology levy, it was, it was put in place along with our MNO levy, our maintenance and operations levy. And we had planned for a six-year levy cycle. We have been thinking through that as we are going through this planning process. And you know, we're worried about reducing costs or creating costs uh, and maintaining alignment with the levy. Um, if we don't make a change to the levy as it stands right now, we'll have to go back out and ask for an additional levy in two years. And that, there's a cost associated with the ballot measure. There's uh, a lot of time and energy and effort that goes into the development of a levy in any case. And so we were hoping that we would be able to make a shift and actually forego the last two years of the current levy and just begin a new four-year levy that's maintaining alignment with the, the current MNO levy or the enrichment levy that we'll be putting out there. Uh, it's not usual or typical for school districts to do this, but we've actually done this once before with the capital levy that we had done for buildings. And when we went out for a bond, we foregoad, we, we went, we forewent, we foregone, we fore, I don't know what the word is, but there's a word out there that means exactly what I'm saying. That uh, would allow us to not collect those last two years and then just change over to a new levy cycle. And so we would work with our bond council to ensure that that was legal and appropriate and that they would help us write the language associated with that. And then if you'll hit that last, the next slide for me. Uh, last slide about the levy is just some information about levy planning. We would have some very um, specific timelines on when we have to file in December with the um, elections department. And then we would need to get a board resolution in front of you in October. And then there's all of the work and energy that goes into creating all of the plans and submitting the drafts to OSPI um, over the summertime. Next slide, please. Just to give you an overview, this is our financial update. So in getting into the finances, this is our projected year end as of November. So this is looking at where we believe the year end will be based on our actual first quarter final numbers. Um, this isn't significantly dissimilar from where we're at right now today, but this is actually based on our full forecast projection. So it's the best information that I can prepare for you and share. Um, where we're seeing our revenues right now is our revenues are significantly down. $23.5 million is our current loss of revenue, and we've talked about that in previous updates. And that's primarily related to the loss of enrollment. We had 1,100 students that we had budgeted for that we didn't have come to school this year. Um, and there's a number of factors that play into that, not only uh, potentially withdrawal for other schools or withdrawal for homeschool, but also kindergarten and um, first grade students that may not have come into the school district this year. Uh, our expenditures, however, are also down considerably right now. Uh, and keeping in mind, this is the November data, but those are down $28.8 million. And we have seen an uptick in expenditures right now. We're, as we're ramping school back up and we're bringing in additional staff to help with safety precautions, and we're transporting more students and we're using our vendor for transportation and, and so on and so forth. We're seeing our costs uh, start to increase. And so what we'll start seeing is the savings in expect, in expenditures will start to narrow. But I don't believe that our revenue loss will be any worse than what we see here. Right now, our fund balance stands at 7.6% at around, and we were anticipating $35.7 million. That's as of today. But as, as I said, as our expenditures begin to climb, if our revenues don't also recover, then we will can, we will start to see that fund balance um, begin to narrow. And if you'll go to the last slide for me, Tom. Thank you. Uh, you know, one of the things that will also have a significant impact on our revenue will be potentially some of the legislative happenings. I pulled a few bills that are specifically related to school finance. There, there, there are, I don't know, dozens and dozens of bills in play right now in the legislature. Some of which have financial impacts or not, but these are specifically related to how we get our money or, or, or really noteworthy that we are trying to manage. And the first one is House Bill 1368. This is a bill that was recently passed. It was signed by the governor. I think it was last week. You know, time gets away from you. And this bill allows us to access our COVID dollars. These are the S R two funds. So we had S R one that we got last year. These are now S R two funds, and this was the bill that was signed into law in December 27th by President Trump. Um, and this provides us with 90% of our funding allocation for S, for S R two, excuse me. Um, however, the S R two dollars are also still being considered by the legislature to be um, a way to offset some of the state losses for both enrollment and transportation. So there's two bills right now that are working through the legislature that have an impact potentially on the current year. And that would be House, um, House Bill 1476, which is working to address our enrollment declines. And Senate Bill 5128, which is working to address transportation revenue declines. And so depending on the circumstances of how the legislature finalizes, what we would likely see is that our losses in both enrollment and possibly transportation would be taken from our S R dollars. So um, right now, our S R allocation is $31 million. Our S R two allocation is $31 million. We only have access to 90% of that. And then of that, if we have $16 million of enrollment and transportation losses, we could have that removed from our S R and provided to us for those purposes. So um, it, there's a lot of flex in the system right now and a lot of waiting and watching to see what happens. Uh, and then one note on a bill that is really concerning for school districts is um, a Bill 5326, which would be a bill that would allow for health and pension benefits to be provided to our school bus drivers that are working through contracted agencies. So not our internal staff. They're already eligible for our said benefits and uh, retirement service. But this would be a, a parallel um, allocation for our, for our contracted bus drivers. And um, we are of course always happy for people to receive adequate benefits and, and appropriate um, pay. However, the bill was written initially without any funding for school districts, and so that would be a levy expense for school districts without any funding from the state if that were to occur. And so we're working with our advocate to ensure that uh, language is written in that would help ensure that future funding would be available to, to service those um, benefits. And I, that was the end of my presentation for this evening, so I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Um, I'll start with Vice President Von Bright. Any comments or questions?
Um, no, I, I really want to thank um, um, Zadina and her very hardworking team. We had a, yesterday, crack of dawn meeting with the, uh, this is Audit and Finance Committee. Um, and so went over all of these and, and I think I asked all of my questions there, but I, I do think um, it was a bit shocking about the Moody's um, downgrading, but I, as you said, you know, I think we really have to be thankful that we were um, clever enough to uh, redo our bond um, rating already. So we've saved so much money and hopefully uh, we can get this figured out. But I do want to commend the staff. It's, I'm um, it's, it's really an impressive team of people that keep us uh, going forward in this and, and figuring it out in the projections. The group that makes the projections on how we're spending budget and they're building the budget now, which we'll be seeing in the next months, or a couple of months, we'll be seeing the budget development. And it's um, it's, they're really very thoughtful and appreciate the whole team. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Director, I mean, Director Keating?
Um, thank you. Um, I wanted, so I had a question about, so when you were talking about the ballot measure, um, I'm hoping I can actually translate my actual notes to ask you. Um, but so the, with the OSPI approval um, around that, does that go back to the levy caps that were part of McCleary? Is that correct?
Yeah, that, yes. That, that legislation was enacted at the same time as um, at the, you know, towards the end of McCleary. It's one of the accountability measures that was put in place as part of the process of um, improving McCleary dollars, approving McCleary dollars for us. Um, and, and it's, we didn't have to participate in submitting to OSPI because we had gotten, we had, we had approved our measure the year prior to that implementation. So this is our first time through. Lots of school districts have been through this. And um, you know, it, it's not a formality. It's important, but it's um, you know, it's somewhat perfunctory to what we're going to be doing. You, you just submit it. They review it. They give any questions or review back to you. You make adjustments and then, you know, it's approved and we're ready. You make adjustments and then, you know, it's approved and we're ready to go forward.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted for for my own clarification, but also for the public, because there was so much um conversation around levy, you know, the the limitations that the levy caps had on our district and other districts. So I appreciate that. Um and then uh I and and I don't actually expect you to have this answer, but I was um in the S B five one two eight, the transportation funding bill. If that passes, what I what I'm unsure about is if that is um if that will, how do I want to ask this? If that funding formula is like from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year and beyond that? Or is that just a temporary fix for COVID?
So both are included in the bill as it stands. Um it's hard to say what will end up being passed, but it will be, it will be working to fix both the current year and providing us with seventy percent of our current year's allocation. And then few helping us with our future year because future year is based on current ridership. And our current ridership is, you know, decimated based on the fact that we weren't holding regular school until we're getting ready to start now. Um but those numbers won't catch up because they take a spring and a fall average as part of the um calculation. And so no matter what, we would be down those spring numbers or those fall numbers, the winter numbers. Um and and so that's what it would help to correct if the law was implemented.
Okay, thank you. And then I was thinking, um the in your slide, you um also listed uh S J R. I wrote the numbers down, but I'm forgetting what it was actually called. Um eighty-two oh four, but around, I think the the how many, what the percentages of passing a bill is that? And and so one thing that I, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I took that out of today's presentation for the public, but I'm happy to talk through it here now.
Oh, see, I did my homework.
Were provided, though.
Sorry, that was from earlier when I was reading that, but that, I guess I just wanted to talk about, mention, what I wrote about that is that so many smaller school districts and rural school districts are really negatively impacted. So this would be a significant help for them to be able to get their own levies and bonds passed and and just the work that um I've done and Vice President Bonbright and I have done with other um board directors across the state, like that. This is a huge issue for so many of our smaller school districts. Um so I just uh wanted to, so that was my comment from the presentation I studied earlier today. And then for the public, just S R, and and I think I even asked you this last time you presented to us, but I just wanted to define what S R is because it can get so confusing around what school funding is emergency. So I actually looked it up so I can say it correctly, but elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund is S R. And so I know that it's so hard to keep track of COVID relief bills like the this entire time and it gets really convoluted. So I just wanted to share that for the public. Um when S R is like, it's talking about emergency relief funding, and that's my last comment. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Keating. Director Leon, any comments?
Uh yeah, thanks for the presentation. Just a question about your comment about the technology levy. One point you had said it was due to expire two thousand twenty-two, but then in one of your slides it said currently planned for six years till twenty-four, but we might get rid of the last two and add it to the new plan. So I'm confused on, is it already expired twenty-two or that's a potential plan that would pass?
I may have misspoke. Um it's possible that I misspoke. Uh the current technology levy goes through twenty twenty-four. I have to look at the slide, sorry. But yeah, it and so it 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 goes two years beyond our current levy, which expires in twenty twenty-two. So the 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 maintenance and operations levy goes for four years as done in twenty twenty-two. The tech levy would be able to be collected for two years past that. We would like to forego those two years and just start a new four-year.
Okay, all right. So the tech left, uh maintenance is and then and the tech in twenty-four is what you're originally, okay, and we want to synchronize them. Got it. Thank you.
Director Chozen.
Uh nothing, nothing much other than I I appreciate the clarification on the the Moody situation and the Moody downgrade. First of all, that's, this is all news to me. Okay, so uh I I have a now a a understanding of that, so I appreciate you breaking down because one of my questions would have been like, well, what do we do to deserve that? So I I just want to say, uh you know, thank you for for just the understanding or sharing the understanding of what that is, why things happen like that and that we, nothing that we did caused that to happen. Appreciate that. That's important for folks to know.
I'd like to build on that, though, and ask Rosalyn if you have a sense of, as I look at these changes, some of them are interesting to me, um like the changes in the economies slash tax base, which is now economy shifts. I don't know how this sways, in which direction it sways things, but it's a um a deliberate change to move from median family income to medium house, median household income and then to do that whatever ratio they've done there. Household income is a different thing than family income. Household is all the earners in a household rather than the family unit and how the census data collects that. So I'm curious about um one, just definitionally, what falls under institutional framework? And then more broadly, if you have a sense of which of these factors um made the difference between whether or not Tacoma ended up being downgraded or or potentially upgraded or staying the same. So what does institutional framework include? And then what are these, which of these variables or the combination of them led to Tacoma's change?
So I I can't answer your first question because it's it's not our um methodology, but we do. So what's going to happen from this point forward is um Moody's has reached out to me and we will be having a meeting with our Moody's representative. And in that conversation, we will go through the different criteria, some of the changes, some of their worries, what we're seeing, what are some of the state trends, what are our enrollment trends? And then from there, they'll make a determination about whether or not we will make a change or not. Uh there's still a possibility that we won't be downgraded, but that's, they've already given us the indication that based on their factoring that we would go from an A A two to an A A three. And so now it's a me, a a conversation point of, you know, are their assumptions accurate in relationship to what we're experiencing? Or should there be other factors considered before they make that downgrade? Um and and so I'm happy to ask some of those questions when we have our meeting. Uh I'm not sure that they'll bring us the clarity that you're looking for, but we can certainly, we can certainly make an effort for that.
Okay, and I see that Director Bonright has a hand to, is it on this topic? You want to follow up? Go ahead.
I wanted to to add something about um this change that Moody's doing. And one of the things, and correct me if I'm wrong, um Rosalyn, but my understanding is one of the components that they that they are thinking that we should be downgraded about is is that our fund balance, they consider to be low. We have a five percent, you know, what is the target number? We're going for five percent of our fund balance and not to go below that, that that we have that. And they think that that's dangerously low for a uh an organization to not have that much enough operating funding on on hand. They want to go up to upwards of twenty, you said, I think, or ten or twenty.
The Governor Finance Officer, the Government Finance Officers Association or G F O A recommends a ninety-day fund balance reserve, and we're running closer to thirty days of fund balance reserve. And so we have great reasons why we run a thirty-day reserve and that that works for us and that's fine. Um but you know, if we're talking about what a standard would be across all kinds of different government agencies, that's what they're putting in place as, you know, their standard. And so we just don't meet that standard. You know, similarly, if you look at your own credit score, right, you get, you get credit rated based on the number of um number of cards you have balances on or the number of years your credit has been um available. And so one small change can make a big difference in your your own personal credit score, just based on the fact that you opened a card. And and it doesn't mean that you're not really truly credit worthy. It just means that that one factor now has changed because it's just a mathematical formula, not a value statement.
So President Cobb, one of the things I I think is important for for the public to know is that we as a board have set that standard at five percent because we want to, uh we don't want to hold too much money um in away from the students that we currently have in classrooms, but we also don't want to have not enough to serve the ones in the future. And so we have made that five percent call. And so in a sense, if if Moody's feels that that's um you know, it doesn't make them feel comfortable about our our financial stability, we disagree uh at this point in time. But um it is because of the, a lot of piece of it was a big factor in it. My understanding was that they um have a higher requirement for fund balance.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Rosalyn. I look for, I'm really curious to hear how the conversation with them goes, especially in light of these changes and how it's a new model for them to implement and operationalize. And especially when I see things like those notching factors, and my mind starts going, well, how do they assess the additional strength in the local resources? Uh do they have all the information they need from us to be able to assess our local resources correctly? So I just look forward to hearing how that goes. Director Leon?
So are some school districts in other parts of the country um, you know, uh rated by other agencies, it sounds like? And are are there more fair ways to do this if we think that we're not being treated fairly by Moody's or is that pretty much the only game in in town for Washington?
Yeah, I I think that's a great question. Uh I think we could certainly reconsider whether we want to utilize Moody's in the future. That's an opportunity that we can um, you know, investigate when it's time to go out for another bond. Uh these bonds currently have been rated by Moody's, and so we would carry on until we had another reason to do something differently. There are other rating agencies. Um Fitch is another rating agency that we don't currently use, that maybe we could switch to, you know, something more like that. Um and and I don't know that I would say I would classify this as being unfairly treated as opposed to just, you know, it's change and sometimes change is difficult in the beginning. And you know, after you get into it, maybe it's not so bad. We wouldn't be alone in this and and we wouldn't be um initially hurt. So I think that, you know, by the time it gets to us going out for another bond, we'll be in pretty good shape. Uh is is my my best hope, and who knows what our fund balance will look like then. I mean, who knows? I would like to think in five years, our funding issues will be amazingly solved and we will never have to worry about another dollar again.
Thank you, Rosalyn. I think I'm reflecting now on the comments I've heard and I I feel like we lean, the board got into like competition mode almost, like a you had like, you're taking us down. Like, so I think we're all just curious to see how it lands and hope and know and trust that you and the team will do everything in your power to make sure that we're in the best position. So just look forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any last comments? Hearing none, we will move on. If I can get back to my agenda. Sorry, everyone. Think it's item number, sorry, just one second. Okay, item number ten, curriculum instruction. There are no curriculum instruction matters tonight. Item number eleven, business matters, eleven point one, approval of acceptance of COVID nineteen response and recovery grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the COVID nineteen response and recovery grant in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for the period of February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two and expenditures of funds according to the accepted guidelines. Funding source, Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item eleven point one?
I still move.
Is there a second? Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Um so I didn't hear any opposition, but I want to note for the record that this item passes at four to zero. I um want to note that I'm abstaining from voting on this item, just given my connection to the Gates Foundation. While I didn't have anything to do with us getting this grant, just for the record, I want to abstain. Um item eleven point two, approval of Head Start fiscal year twenty budget carryover.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the district's request of a budget carryover from the fiscal year twenty in the amount of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Approval Head Start F Y twenty budget carryover.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item eleven point two?
I have a motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
My second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item eleven point two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item eleven point three, approval of acceptance of City of Tacoma Whole Child Programs Grant Amendment number four.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Director of Whole Child recommends that the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of the City of Tacoma Whole Child Programs Grant Amendment number four in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars for the period of January first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and the expenditures of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, City of Tacoma.
Is there a motion to adopt item number eleven point three?
I'm moved to adopt item eleven point three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this item? All those in favor of adopting item eleven point three, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item eleven point four, approval for addendum number one for a veritative operating company contract.
As I wanted to provide the board and public some additional information, uh Veritiv supplies the district with soap including solution dispensers. We're currently seeking an extension to their contract for two years and an increase of three percent to their current prices. Uh if we were to go out to market and start a procurement process right now for these items, we will pay substantially a higher amount, and that's due to COVID nineteen impacts and an increase in demand. With that said, the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the addendum number one to extend the contract for an additional two years. Funding source, facilities.
Thank you. Um is there a motion to adopt? Did I already call for a motion? Now my mind is slipping. Is there a motion to adopt item eleven point four?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions about item number eleven point four?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Williams. What do you, I mean, I guess it's all dependent on how um long and in what ways we continue to respond to the impacts of COVID, how long um this kind of market for these products will be? But do you expect that this is uh area of uh product or like procurement needs where after the supply chain adjusts, it will level out? Or is this just an area that's going to continue to be, um the market's going to be tight as long as we're continuing with to respond to COVID? Like, we can get Lysol and Clorox wipes now in a way that we couldn't in the first six months. So is this a situation where the supply chain's adjusting or it's just going to be a tight market until we pass this?
I believe supply chains are adjusting, but as more people get vaccinated, we'll see uh in price prices slowly start to decrease. So it's just a matter of time.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adopting eleven point four, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you. Item eleven point five, approval of the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the contract between Tacoma Public Schools District number ten and Turner Construction Company for Skyline Elementary School.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the G N P amendment, which states the guaranteed maximum price on the Skyline Elementary School project and authorize the superintendent or designated to sign said G N P amendment the amount of thirty million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars excluding sales tax.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item eleven point five?
A motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting eleven point five, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. We need to coordinate. Uh eleven point six, approval to negotiate an award design build alternative method contract with Hensel Phelps Construction Company for Fossett Elementary School.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award a contract to Hensel Phelps Construction Company for the design build alternate method for Fossett Elementary Replacement Project.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'm moved to adopt uh item number eleven point six.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Mr. Williams, can you say a bit about Hensel Phelps? I don't remember seeing this name come across um some of our projects in the past, and it could just be my short memory, but and it could just be my short memory, but can you say a bit about this company? Or Mr. Aldrich? Thank you.
I'll let our executive director of planning construction, Morris Aldrich, take that question.
Hensel Phelps is, good evening, board members. Hensel Phelps is a national construction company. They've got headquarters in Seattle, in California, in San Francisco, in LA. Since we began doing our design bill projects, they're one of many companies that have started looking at trying to do business within the district. And part of our selection process is we go through selecting a design builder and their architectural firm, which is going to be BLRB, that is a local architectural firm. Part of that criteria is looking at how they do inclusion. And nationally and within the Puget Sound region, Hensel Phelps is one of the leaders in inclusion and actually led our competition as we went through. And that was one of the deciding factors was their inclusion package that they put together to show how they were going to get not only just our regular local vendors working, but also looking at some of those micro businesses as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting.
It sounds like as you've said that they're a national organization, not based at Tacoma, but they've made surements that they're going to use Tacoma employees or people that live in Tacoma to do their work and help put money back into our community is what you're saying.
Yes, sir. They sure did.
Yep, great.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 11.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 11.7 approval of the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the Tacoma School District and Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound for the site adjacent to Downing Elementary School.
And Morris is going to provide the board and public some information on what led to the purchase of this property, Nancy Renee, as well. You're on mute, Morris.
Sorry about that. As we were looking at the replacement of Downing Elementary School, we were approached by the Boys and Girls Club to look at a partnership, or really to continue partnership that we've had with them. As they have tried to get out of the building business, it gave us an opportunity to be able to take their existing facility and build around that and remodel the interior to be for us, one, to be able to save some taxpayer dollars, still giving our students the same type of building that we would have, no matter whether we were keeping it or not. But really a partnership that we're both entities could benefit from. Because with this sale, we'll also then lease portion of the building back then with a 20-year lease that is also included in your package. We're actually purchasing this building at $3 million below the appraisal value. And then as we go through the next 20 years, that will be drawn down over, I believe it's a little over $6,250 per month, which comes out to somewhere around 25 years. So as we move out, the $3 million that we're paying under basically draws down from there. So they're not actually paying us any dollars to lease that space, even though they're paying for all of their utilities that they're using. And it's just a win-win for us. It allows them to take more of their capital and put toward our students, both at the elementary level and the middle schools. They have an extensive middle school program that they've had there for a number of years.
Thank you.
And I'll also say too that their board has also approved this agreement last week. And this is the second agreement of this type that they've actually done with the school district. I think the first that they did was with Peninsula roughly two years ago.
Thank you.
Renee, do you have any additional comments?
Oh, Morris did an excellent job. I just add that I think the vision on this is incredible to include an existing building into the redesign and build of Downing. It's really consistent with your Board Policy 6900 on facilities planning because it reduces environmental impact and also reduces the cost of the project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting item 11.7, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. In addition to the policy that General Counsel should reference, I think this just speaks to partnerships too. So I look forward to seeing how this space gets used and how the relationship continues to be facilitated as a result of the building improvement. So thanks for your work on that. We'll move on to item number 12, other business. And before going to 12.1, I just want to give our student board members a heads up that I hope to start with you all and any reports you have tonight. So just want to put that in your mind if you want to make comments, give you a foreshadow, forewarning. But we'll move on to item number 12.1, comprehensive security plan.
Yes, President Cobb, this action item is a follow-up to a study session conducted by the board on February 18. The portion of the study session where the board looked at the safety and security apparatus at the school district and at that time indicated a desire to perhaps see a comprehensive look at a security plan going forward. So this action item is an invitation for the board to, if it chooses to engage in further discussion and direct action, to see that desire come about. So what we could do here is, President Cobb, move for the adoption of the written recommendation, have it seconded, engage in discussion, and then vote.
Thank you, and thanks for rehapting the conversation from the 18th. So I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt item number 12.1?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments from the board or questions from the board? Well, I'll just offer, oh, Director Leon?
Unless you want to go first.
No, go ahead.
Okay. You know, it's called a security plan, but I think it's important everybody knows. We've talked about health and safety and mental health around security. It's a security of the whole student and staff, including their health and mental health, not just, some people might think physical health or security of a building or something. But this is really, really to think about kind of globally and from all aspects. So I just make sure that the public is aware that it's pretty deep.
Well, I just want to clarify though, I agree with your point that we've really been talking in the context of a broader health and safety approach across the board. But I think that within that broad health and safety plan, there's lots of dimensions of that work. Some of it's happening in the context of the work that is led through our team, the Whole Child Program. Some of it's happening in the context of partnerships related to mental health. And I think the intent is, and I'm superintendent, send to our, no correction if I'm wrong, but this is our focused effort to carve out the safety part of that comprehensive, I mean, the security part of that comprehensive health and safety plan. So obviously and definitely, there are intersections between security and more of the comprehensive aspects of health and safety. But I think the team is, if I'm correct, is the focus for security.
You've done a great job and I appreciate Director Leon, your comments because there are intertwined, but this is not a comprehensive review of all the health and safety programs inside of the district. And so I think you did a great job of, President Cobb, of articulating that intersection. And then the focus here is around the security elements that we know have impacts on mental health and other elements of that. And so that clarification is important.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 12.1 and moving this work to get to a more comprehensive security plan forward? Oh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is adopted. I look forward to the future conversations about this and seeing where we land moving forward. Item number 13, report to the board. There's none tonight. And what will be populated here will follow our regular benchmark reports following the conversations that we were having in our retreat about priority benchmarks. So this item will soon be populated with those quarterly benchmarks reports as we move forward. Item number 14, board comments and reports. And as I tried to foreshadow, I'll start with our student members tonight. You've been hanging with us for this two-hour meeting. We're approaching the two-hour mark. So I want to thank you for giving us your time on top of what I know are long days. So I'll start with member Sman. Nathan, do you have a report tonight?
Yeah, I have some comments. So first off, we had a lot of students commenting tonight in the public comment. And I thought that was, I was glad to hear student voices. But I also feel that I want to represent, you know, like every student voice and how they feel about going back to school. So I also want to say that there are a lot of kids who are excited about going back, kids who think it'll be better learning in person. And also people who just kind of want to, especially for some of my senior friends and seniors that I know in my classes, they're excited to, you know, be able to have those last few memories, like people were saying. But I do understand their concerns and I'm glad to see that, you know, the district and the board are taking those into account. Director Leon, your comments on it, I thought were very insightful. So thank you for that. And then also, oh yes. So a group of students from the Mayor's Commission, the Mayor's Youth Commission of Tacoma came to me and they talked to me about, they wanted to see some, so they felt that on the website, that mental health resources, and I know that mental health has been a big topic tonight too, the mental health resources weren't like as obvious as they should be on the website. So they were advocating for, you know, maybe changing that or, I guess, yeah, changing the placement of that on the website, maybe making them more accessible to students. And so that's something that they wanted to talk about. I think they are, they might comment in the future about that too, so you can hear from them directly. I think they're probably preparing a presentation too. But I just wanted to kind of bring that up and kind of get that rolling. So yeah, that's pretty much all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being a liaison too between the youth council and receiving their feedback. Appreciate it. Indigo, do you have any comments tonight?
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Nathan just shared with us. A lot of students do have concerns about the return, a lot of students and parents. I just want to make sure that we continue to reassure them and let them know the precautions that we're taking to make sure that they're going back to school safely, because I know we are taking precautions and just make those public to our youth and our students and our community, just to make sure everyone feels safe going back and we're doing this the best way possible, which I know that we are.
Thank you. Jasmine, are you still with us? Do you have any comments tonight in addition to what you've already shared?
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to echo what Indigo and Nathan have already said. It was really refreshing to see so much student representation. I know that me and all of the other student board members try our best to represent students, but there are only four of us. There's only so many viewpoints we can bring. So it's really nice to see students utilizing their own voice and, you know, representing their views and, you know, claiming their power. So that was really nice to see.
Thank you. Caitlin, any report tonight?
Nothing to report or share. I just agree with what the other student board members have said.
Thank you, Caitlin. I'll turn to the board members. Vice President Bonright, any report tonight?
Nope, I think it's getting late. I'll pass.
Director Keating?
I'll keep mine short. I've been calling this week Death by Zoom. On Sunday, I attended the, with Ms. Medina as well. But the, I'm going to get, all the acronyms are coming out right now, but the WASDA, WASA, WASBO Conference. It was a four-hour Zoom conference on Sunday. And so I did that. And then they, WASDA is doing a really, really good job of student engagement. And I know that Jasmine has participated in some of that and supported their work. And the student representatives that spoke during the conference actually had the most profound things to say, which is never surprising to me. And they were from across the state and just really add so much value. So I want to thank our student reps for just being here and showing up every time and contributing in such a really meaningful way. So I just want to thank you. And then, yeah, upcoming for me for WASDA is the Large School Caucus and the Equity and Access Caucus in early March. And yeah, more opportunities to be on Zoom.
Thank you, Director Keating, for the report and for giving your time to WASA, WASA, WASBO. I have been to that conference before. And the WASBO crew, Ms. Medina's crew are very different from the WASDA crew. And it's an interesting social experiment even just to see all of our associations, education associations in action. But I think what comes across from all of them is just like commitment to the work. And so I'm glad that students were at the, students were there too. I'm being positive about the financial people. I think we need all these different strengths to bring to bear to our, to common challenges. You need the people who can think in spreadsheets and to think in budgets. And you need the people who can think about local governance and how communities are involved. You need people who can think about running the district. So from an operational standpoint. So they all come together to come up with great policy ideas and ways forward that we all benefit from. So I wasn't saying anything bad about the finance people, Ms. Medina. And thanks for your time on Sunday, Lisa. We appreciate you representing us in that way. Director Strozer? No report tonight. Director Leon?
Thanks. In addition to, I've already mentioned the visits that I had with Jefferson. So excellent job by their staff, their students, their parents, all of them doing amazing work there to keep those kids safe while they're just blossoming and learning again in a more robust way. So and I'll be at the Lincoln Game Friday at Mount T. So we'll keep an eye and make sure protocol's still being followed there, and I'm sure it will be. We had one injury last week that was significant. So I was able to testify in Olympia last week on school-based health centers to try to just make sure we continue to have good funding for that and accessibility for schools to have health centers in the school. There's a lot of evidence proof that if you put them in schools, especially high schools and some middle schools have them too, that kids' academic performance and mental health and physical health really just improves all around. So we have one at Oakland High School. We are going to, we've reestablished, we're going to do some, the volunteer school sports physicals with MultiCare and the PALP Tribal Health Residence and my residence. So I take them and we do physicals. So April 4, we're going to do those. All things permitting, as long as things continue to go the way they're going. As we already talked about, the infection rates going down in our county. So don't forget to double mask, everybody. That's it.
Thank you. And I don't have much to report tonight either. I think a lot has already been said and it is getting late. But I do want to again thank the students who are aboard and for your commitment to showing up. We really truly appreciate your participation and the time that you commit to this. And I want to thank the students who signed up for public comment tonight for participating too. And I won't say but, because but always sounds like you didn't mean the thing that you just said. But and, I really want, if any of you are still watching, I want you to know that this board is your big, is part of your support system and we are your champions. So we want to hear from you and please know that the work that we're trying to do is we try to think in terms of your best interest. And hearing from you helps us be clear about what that is. And just know too that we strive to do what's right. I'm just thinking of Dr. Dolores Silas's comments about do the right thing. We try to strive to do what's right. We know that it won't always feel perfect for everyone in any one moment, but we always strive to improve. So the more we can hear from you just in partnership and from your thoughts about how to make things better, we're open to it. So please just feel free to send emails or to reach out via your classroom teachers who might reach out to us on your behalf if you don't want to. Just know that we're your partners. We want to hear from you. We like your feedback. And if it's not right for you right now, then it just takes you reaching out and letting us know how it could be better for us to think about how we might implement your input. So just know that that's the partnership is also a commitment that we have in addition to every student every day. So know that we are interested in partnering with you to create educational opportunities and experiences that really work for as many of you as we can. So just thank you again for showing up. Any other comments from members of the board? No? Okay, then we will move on to item number 15. Announcements of future board meetings, Thursday, March 11, 2021. And I want to reiterate from conversations about the COVID update earlier, this, we're striving to return to in-person meetings for our regular business meetings, and we're shooting hopefully for March 11. We want to give our, the staff and the team time to implement the same kind of, and develop and help us implement the same kind of safety protocols that we've been working on for months to develop for schools. We haven't been using our meeting space in the same way that we traditionally have since COVID. It's been the side of like our TV, school opportunities. So we've got a lot of work to do to figure out how to make that a safe opportunity for members of the board, our student board members, and some of the members of the public who might show up to provide public comments. So we are working on that now, but hoping to shoot for March 11 for regular business meetings. As we get started with that return, we will likely keep the study sessions in a virtual format and figure out a timeline for rolling those back to in-person too. So again, we'll meet on March 11 for our regular business meeting, March 18 at 6:00 PM for a study session, and then Thursday, March 25 for another regular business meeting. And with that, we'll move on to item number 16, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight, and I'll see you soon. Good night.